This program is brought to you by Newsworks in cooperation with the Eau Claire Area School Board. This program is simulcast on WRFPLP 101.9 FM.
Yes. Commissioner Torres?
Here.
Commissioner Vu?
Here.
Commissioner Bika?
Here.
Commissioner Harder?
Here.
Commissioner Klinkhammer?
Here.
Commissioner Nordine?
Here.
Thank you, we have a form. There are some items that would need to consider in closed session under 19.85.1E, 1985.1C. I need a motion to go into closed session.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, in a second.
Second.
Those who approve say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. So, we will reconvene at 7:00 PM. Thank you. Good evening. We are going to start our open session. Two minutes before 7:00, we finished our closed session and agreed to reconvene in an open session a couple of minutes later. So, here we are. Tonight, welcome to our audience. Tonight, we have Arianna Hesselberg leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Arianna is a first grader from Northwoods. Hello, Arianna, how are you doing? Very nice meeting you. Arianna was chosen to lead the pledge for a very special reason. Each year after Veterans Day, we have heard that Northwoods takes up a collection of pocket change to help to sponsor Freedom Honor Flight trips for veterans, which is an all expenses paid trip to Washington DC. And I've heard that it includes a custom tour of national landmarks and memorials and all this fun stuff that there is in Washington. Well, let me tell you that Arianna went beyond donating her pocket change and emptied her whole piggy bank worth of savings to help with this special gift for veterans. And for that, we are very proud and we are very thankful and we would like to honor you by asking you to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Is that good? Very good.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Arianna. Thank you. Next point in the agenda is our public forum. We will open the forum to citizens who will be allowed up to four minutes to address the board, providing that he or she has additional or new information that has not been previously shared at the meeting. The school board will not hear personal complaints of school personnel nor any person connected with the school system in a public forum. And tonight, we have one person requesting the opportunity to address the board, and that is Lynette Hess. Lynette Hess.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak, that's a hard act to follow. My name's Lynette Hesse, I believe I need to state my address, which is E-3200 Aspen Road, Aliva. And thank you for everybody's time and especially thank you for our student volunteers, I recognize what a time commitment this is. So, I'm here speaking tonight with regards to this evening's proposed budget. And I really wanted to bring up and highlight and address the issue of the absence of outside restrooms and running water at Memorial High School. This is a safety issue for every student, staff member, and guest to the high school, which on some fall evenings can be up to 700 folks. It causes issues because we don't have running water or running water restrooms and the school's locked based on safety issues. We find a lot of our folks are running across the street to the gas station to use the All students participating in physical education, marching band, and outdoor athletics are affected by this. This is also a barrier for our high school, Memorial High School, to host certain WIA events, Special Olympics, and impedes revenue opportunities for public events based on the lack of restrooms and running water. We're the only high school in the district without available running water and public restrooms outside. I was up here speaking representing a group of folks as I was really disappointed to see this line item was not proposed in the upcoming budget as expected by numerous conversations. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next point in the agenda is superintendent's report.
Thank you, and good evening, everyone. I'd like to review the upcoming school board events. All of these meetings will take place in the administration building. There will be a meeting of the Budget Development Committee on December 10th, and that will be at 1:00. On December 16th, at 8:00 AM, there is a meeting of the Policy and Governance Committee, and on December 16th also, there is a school board meeting at 7:00. So, tonight, I would like to recognize the North High School Boys Hockey Team. Last Friday, the team presented a check for $1,300 to feed my people, which will provide more than 5,000 meals for those in need. The team raised the money earlier this year through a charity bike ride, and I want to congratulate the team for this very honorable project as their kickoff to their hockey season. I also wish to recognize our very own student representative, Morgan Prim, who was WQOW's News 18 Student of the Month for November. Morgan was selected for her leadership in making Memorial a warm and welcoming place for all students. She serves the Memorial students as a link leader to connect underclassmen to upperclassmen and to create mentoring relationships among the under and upperclassmen. So, we're very proud of you, Morgan, and we thank you for all of this service, not only to the school board but also to Memorial. Today is National Special Education Day, which commemorates the anniversary of the nation's first federal special education law, the Individuals with Disabilities Act, IDEA, was signed into law on December 2nd, 1972, thus making public education available to all American children. Here in the ECASD, we have a team of over 240 special education staff members who are led by the Director of Special Education, Mandy Van Gleet. And I want to recognize Mandy and her team for their tireless work to ensure quality, equitable education for all students. On November 18th, the school board approved the retirement of Todd Johnson. And Todd, I think you are in the audience, would you please stand? So, as many of you know, Todd is the principal of the Chippewa Valley Montessori Charter School. He began his teaching career in 1992. He taught middle school, math and science, and later he taught at the elementary level. Todd joined the Eau Claire Area School District in 1998 as the South Middle School, kind of splitting his time between being a teacher and an assistant principal. He later became the principal of Little Red Elementary School, and finally, he is finishing out his career at Chippewa Valley Montessori. Serving multiple schools at once throughout the years has been kind of a specialty of Todd's. But in 2010, Todd became the full-time principal at Montessori, and he has served there, I think with great grace since then. Todd has a master's degree from University of Wisconsin-Milwaukee and a bachelor's degree from University of Wisconsin-Plattville. He holds a Wisconsin Teaching License in Math, Computer Science, and Elementary, middle level education, as well as an administrator license to serve as a principal. He's also certified to teach and work as a principal in the Montessori setting. So, Todd and I had a lot of discussions about retirement, and I think, Todd, it's going to be very difficult to replace you at Montessori. You have established a great many of deep working relationships and friendships there. You are respected and loved by all, and we thank you for your service. And that concludes my report for tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Hardebek. The next point in the agenda is Board President's Report. Very briefly, the Eau Claire Area School District Board of Education has finalized and released the position description it will use to recruit the next superintendent. For more information about the position and application process, we're inviting all persons interested to visit the school website. The priority deadline for application is January 31st, 2020. In February and March, the board will review written applications, identify top candidates for further interviews, and select finalists to visit Eau Claire for onsite interviews. The board expects to make a decision on the position by late April, allowing the new superintendent to start on or before July 1st, 2020. So, we're moving forward, and we wanted to share those latest advancements with all of you. The next point in the agenda is our student representative, Freeport. Morgan Prim.
Hello. All winter sports will begin conference play this week with boys basketball facing off with Superior, boys hockey matching up with Menominee and Rice Lake, girls hockey playing on Alaska, wrestling competing against Menominee, and girls basketball playing Rice Lake. Swim and dive, dance, and gymnastics will also have their first competitions this weekend. The MHS Teen Literacy Initiative Club is hosting a book sale December 5th and 6th from 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM in the Memorial Library. The proceeds from the sale will go to local literacy projects within the Eau Claire area such as Give a Kid a Book, Chippewa Valley Book Fest, Authors in the Schools, and book donations to homeless shelters. Finally, orchestra will be having their annual cookie walk and carnival on December 14th. They will be featuring music performances by the MHS Orchestra, kids crafts games, a photo op with Santa, Mrs. Claus, and elves, and beverages, and of course, cookies sold by the pound. Admission is free and the event is open to anyone, so I invite you all to come for some holiday cheer and to support the memorial arts. Thank you.
Thank you, Morgan. Our next point in the agenda is School Board Committee Reports. We'll begin with the Lit Committee.
We have not met since our last meeting.
Thank you very much. Budget Committee?
We're in the same boat, we haven't met, but we do meet on Tuesday at 1:00 PM.
Thank you. Damon Trentz?
We will meet December 19th to continue work on elementary capacity.
Thank you very much. This morning, Policy and Governance met, and we have two additional revised policies for the full board consideration. One is about Policy 370, Ex curricular Activities and Programs, and the Policy 370, and then the other one is Policy 830, the Use of Schools Facilities. And they will be included in the next agenda. Our next point in the agenda is the Legislative Update.
Legislature has been on a break, so is the Legislative Update.
Thank you very much. Next point in the agenda is Consent Resolution. The board will consider approval of the Consent Resolution Agenda items. For the Consent Agenda, the board has been furnished with background material on each item or has discussed it at a previous meeting. This will be acted upon with one vote, without discussion. If a board member wants to discuss any item, it will be pulled out of the Consent Agenda and voted on separately. The items are Minutes of November 18th, 2019, Human Resources Employment Report, Summer School Agreement, Shared Services Agreement between the City of Eau Claire and the Eau Claire Area School District. We will need a roll call to approve the Consent Resolution Agenda.
I'll move to approve the Consent Resolution Agenda.
Second.
Commissioner Torres?
Yes.
Commissioner Vu?
Yes.
Commissioner Nordine?
Yes.
Commissioner Bika?
Yes.
Commissioner Harder?
Yes.
Commissioner Klinkhammer?
Yes.
Thank you. The Consent Agenda has been approved. We have two individually considered resolutions, the school board member applications, interviews, and appointment is the first one of them. To proceed with this part of our meeting tonight, we will read the policy first to understand the procedure that we will follow, and then we will do the listening of the candidates and the voting. I would like to thank all the persons that generously have presented their applications and diligently responded to the questions that we made with anticipation. All of them are exemplary citizens, and we look forward to working with, at this point, just one of them because we have just one opening. Dr. Hardebek, would you please read the policy that we will follow?
So, in the voting procedure that's outlined in our policy, Abby Johnson will distribute the ballots and will collect them. For the first vote, if no candidate receives a majority, four votes, candidates receiving the lowest number of votes are dropped. If more than one candidate receives the lowest number of votes, then all will be dropped unless that leaves only one candidate. In that case, the vote shall be taken repeatedly until there are at least two remaining candidates after dropping those with the lowest number of votes. So, that will start your procedure. I believe that you will hear a statement from each of the candidates, and then perhaps ask a follow-up question.
Thank you very much, Dr. Hardebek. To initiate the process, then, we will invite all the candidates to, perhaps, seats on the front row. We have 10 seats and we have 12 applications, so we kindly need two additional chairs on the side. And we will invite you to pick a number from a basket, and that will indicate the order in which you will take seats in the front. And we'll begin from my left to my right. So, the one that gets the number one will be sitting closest to the screen board, the screen. So, before we proceed with our personal statements, and with the purpose of all the audience to get to know you, we are going to do a roll call of the candidates, and to hear your name, please stand up and say hello, and then we'll get started.
Carrie Ackerson? Tyler Barr? Chris Bell? Erica Christensen? Phil Lyons? Sarah McCracken? Karen Peacock? Lisa Pranchinsky? Erica Shorban? Carla Spadarsky? And Michelle Vorpel?
So, we are complete? Michelle Vorpel. So, we have 10 candidates tonight, and you're all sitting, actually, yes, we're missing number four. Yes. So, I would kindly invite you to move a little bit to the front so we can more easily interact with you. So, in the order in which you are sitting, please, you are welcome to come to the stage and identify yourself and make your statement.
Good evening, members of the board, my name is Tyler Barr. I want to give a statement with a brief history. I'm a semi-local boy, born and raised in Chippewa Falls. I attended K through 12 in the Chippewa Falls Public School System and graduated high school from Chi High. From there, I moved on to college at the University of Wisconsin-Eau Claire, where I graduated, where I got all of my generals, and then moved to UW-Stout for my manufacturing and engineering degree. Since then, I have worked in engineering in a few different medical industries, most recently, for the past five years, I've been working at Phillips Medicis in the industrial park here in Eau Claire, and have received my Global Credential in Program Management for my position. Now, you may be asking yourselves, how does my experience in engineering really make me qualified to be on the school board? And how can I contribute? As an engineer, I am taught how to be a critical thinker and a conscious decision-maker. My current position as a project engineer puts me as a direct point of contact with internal and external customers. I have to make thought-out decisions daily that take into account internal and external stakeholders. I also manage mid-to-large program financials, budgets, ranging from a few hundred thousand dollars to a few million dollars. I believe this experience will help me contribute to the school board and allow me to handle difficult decisions as being a board member. Lastly, to close, I want to join the school board better and continuously improve the school system for our children. I currently have one child in the Eau Claire school system and another one that will start in a couple of years. I believe our children deserve the best our society has to offer, and that my values and core competencies can help contribute to their well-being. I've never been part of a public office, but I do understand the Wisconsin school system and understand the severity the school board plays within that system. If voted in, I will be a dedicated and active member of the school board. Thank you for your consideration. Any questions?
We'll do the statements, and then we'll move forward. Thank you very much, Mr. Barr.
Good evening. My name is Carla Berg-Sodarsky. I live on the south side of Eau Claire with my husband, Andy, my daughter, Hallie Nicolet, who is actually at UW-Lacrosse going to school, and my daughter, Winnie Sodarsky, who is in eighth grade at South Middle School. So, we actually recently just moved to Eau Claire about four months ago, and we were living in Aliva Strum. I was born and raised there, went to school there, and we owned a chicken farm, raised 52,000 chickens for Golden Plum. I did that for 15 years, and we were getting tired. So, we decided, we were just kind of doing that on the side, and so we decided to move to Eau Claire. Our oldest daughter graduated, and so my youngest daughter was looking for some more opportunities to do like show choirs and things like that, and we thought Eau Claire school systems would be great. And by the way, I just want to say that when we came to Eau Claire to sign up my daughter at South Middle School, everybody was amazing at South Middle School and even at the office here, very, very welcoming, so that was really cool. So, I guess, like I said, I've only lived here for four months, but I did go to school at UW-Eau Claire for my undergrad, and I lived here two years before we actually bought the farm and had to live on the farm. At Aliva Strum, though, I was Vice President of the school board. I was serving out the third year of my three-year term there, and obviously had to give up my seat because we moved out of the school district. But given that experience, I feel like I can kind of hit the ground running because we worked tirelessly on Yola policies with Stu Waller because ours hadn't been updated for a while. And we worked with also WASBA, Wisconsin Association of School Boards, because we did hire a new superintendent as well in my two years that I was there. And the previous years before I was on there, there was a superintendent that was there for only a few years, and the board previous to when I was on there hired a superintendent without any outside help, and it didn't go very well. And so, I can definitely tell you what to do and what not to do on some of the things that happened in my experience at Aliva Strum. So, currently, I teach at a flagship virtual school, the Rural Virtual Academy. I teach high school science, I also teach dual credit classes for science classes. So, I know that Eau Claire is kind of launching their, maybe the couple, last few years, they're launching their virtual schools, and I feel like I could definitely be a part or help out with that a little bit. Education definitely is my passion. I have two undergrads from UW-Eau Claire, and I'm finishing up my third master's, and I hold eight certifications in the K-12 system.
Your time is over.
Oh, great. Well, that's about it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That went really fast.
Good evening. My name is Erica Shorban. I'm a graduate of Eau Claire Memorial High School and of UW-Stout in Marketing Education with a Business Administration minor. I have continued to call Eau Claire home for my entire adult life. The education I was able to gain here has afforded me many opportunities in the financial industry, holding various leadership roles, and having a successful career. I've seen Eau Claire grow and evolve over the years into a place I'm proud to call home. The culture and continuous improvement of our school system is critical for our continued growth, which is why I would like to be considered for this role. I'm confident that the over 20-year background I have in business lending and financial management will bring valuable perspective to this group. I've been faced with making tough decisions during my career that impacted others and needed to hold up over time. An example is during mergers and acquisitions in my role as a regional manager for a financial, where the results of my recommendations had a direct impact on both employees and the business sustainability. I do not take this responsibility lightly, and I'm committed to evaluating multiple strategies and courses of action in order to reach the best possible outcomes. I believe that public education is a fundamental link to the development of our school board I believe that public education and the execution of our strategic plan is important because all the pillars on that plan come down to creating the environment and culture for our students. That is everything from the facilities we maintain to the behaviors we create. A healthy and safe environment is critical for students to grow into their most authentic selves regardless of their background, family resources, or home life. We'll make decisions that make a difference in their future, and we'll take their lives to places they have not yet dreamed of if we do it right. Ways I have worked to improve the culture and education in our community today are with business partners. I assisted CVTC's Student Central Team and helped them to develop Money Matters, a financial literacy program that their students use that won the Governor's Award. Currently, I also serve as Vice Chair on a Community Advisory Board for a local medical center. When I learned of this opportunity to become part of the school board, I felt compelled that this is something I can help with by working to ensure our faculty and students have an environment and culture that they can thrive in using my background. I have the fortitude to handle difficult conversations to gain perspective, recommend tough decisions, and work together to remove potential obstacles. I'm a choice you can count on and a partner that will work hard to be the voice of many. Above all, I want to be on the school board for every child, parent, or teacher who has ever had someone in their life dealt with they were capable of. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Carrie Ackerson. I live at W2458 Silver Spring Drive. It's kind of a weird thing to do that when you get up here. I live there with my husband Steve, who is a nurse at Mayo Hospital, and I work at Cooperative Educational Service Agency 10 as the Development Director there. First, I want to say that after reading all the applications from all the candidates, I feel confident that you will make a great decision no matter who you pick. It's really an honor for you to have this many qualified and caring people from your community willing to serve on the board. And you really have the unique opportunity to look at the makeup of your board and select a candidate that fills one or more underrepresented areas as you know them. Some things you may want to consider include having people both inside and outside of the educational sphere, having members with students in the district, and more at-large members who may not have students in the district, and most importantly, having the board reflect the race and gender and other demographics of both the community and the district. A balanced and representative board will make everything that you do more valuable for our community. I'll allow my public application response to stand as my statement, and I look forward to your questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, Dr. Hardabek and members of the board. Thank you for the opportunity to introduce myself and to outline my interest in the seat vacated by Commissioner Luganville. My name is Phil Lyons. I've lived in Eau Claire for almost 13 years, and I own a home on the south side. I currently serve on UW-Stout's administrative team as the Vice Chancellor for Administration. I have responsibility for institutional resource allocation, budget, facilities, risk management, capital planning, athletics, and student services. I've devoted 30 years of service to three different institutions of higher education, and I believe there are elements of that knowledge that are transferable to the Eau Claire School District. I've learned a lot about the school district through volunteering and through my children. Two of my children attended elementary through high school and are both furthering their education at UW-institutions. They had wonderful experiences in the district. I also have a 13-year-old who is attending South Middle School and will soon be transitioning to high school. I volunteered in a variety of ways, from supporting the PTO at Robbins to orchestra fundraisers at Memorial, always learning of new programs and new opportunities that the district affords our children. For the last three years, I volunteered time to the Demographic and Trend Committee as a member and then the committee chair. I would have brought a PowerPoint tonight, but I didn't think I'd be able to fit it into these three minutes. But during the past three years, it's been a pleasure to work with some great people on the Demo Trend Committee, including some very talented people in the district administration. It's also been a pleasure to hear from parents across the city who are very passionate about their schools and what happens to them. Passionate, that level is a great thing. My hope tonight is that you find a candidate that will devote time and service that's necessary to being a part of maintaining our place as educational leaders in Wisconsin. I think it's wonderful that there are 11 people, members of the community, that are applying tonight and that are interested in volunteering their time and filling in for Commissioner Luganville in the next few months. You'll have a very tough choice, and as I've done with the Demo and Trend Committee, I'm offering my service and believe I could serve the district well. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Lisa Pranchinsky. Just a little background on me. Unlike, I think, most of the applicants, I am not originally from the Eau Claire area. I grew up outside of Milwaukee, lived in Chicago for a while, and met my husband, and we decided to slow things down a bit instead of the rat race of the big city, and so we moved up here. He's also a huge hunter, so that may have played a small role in that decision as well. One of the things we looked for was a really strong school. I have two kids, one who just started kindergarten this year at Putnam, and one who will be in 4K next year. So obviously, a long road ahead of us as far as the school goes, so I'm extremely interested in being involved in how that goes for them and just what we can do to make the school a really amazing district. I think it's already doing such a great job when we compared it to schools around the area and down in the Milwaukee area. There's just so many things that are offered up here that are very different from that, and so my interest in this position is really to just make it as good of an experience for my kids as I could possibly give them. I loved school when I was growing up. I went to UW-Madison, and I have a bachelor's and a master's in accounting. Don't hold that against me. It's, that was just an amazing experience, and I love the whole process of learning. So I'm really excited to be part of that with my kids going forward. So I would really love your consideration for this position. If you talk to anybody that I've ever been involved with, I never do anything partway. It's do the best that you can always, or don't do it. So I wouldn't be willing to put my name in for this position if I wasn't willing to dedicate 100% towards it. So I just want to thank you all for the opportunity and definitely echo what everyone has said. I mean, I think you have some amazing candidates, and I know whoever you pick will do a phenomenal job.
Thank you very much.
Hello. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to speak tonight. My name's Sarah McCracken. I actually have something in common with Ms. Pranchinsky. I'm actually from the Chicago area originally, and when my family had moved to Eau Claire nearly a decade ago now, I was really unfamiliar with the area and the city, and one thing in talking to people about Eau Claire that echoed from everyone I spoke to was how great our school system is. Everybody was very proud of that fact, and they would tell us all about that. And as a community, you can see that we're deeply proud of our schools and that we truly believe in our school system as a service to our families and our kids, and you can see that tonight even with a dozen community members who have stepped forward to try to fill the vacant position. In my career, I spent many years working as a public defender, but I specialize primarily in juvenile justice. As part of that focus, I spent a lot of time working to reform our local juvenile justice system. As part of that, I helped develop and implement evidence-based practices to, and progressive ideas to help better serve the individual needs of our youth that were involved in the juvenile justice system, to try to best serve their needs to help them succeed. I've also served the past few years as a school board member for the McKinley School. As part of that as well, I've seen, you know, insight into the district as well as the passion and need for continued individualized education for our students to find unique programming for all learning styles to help our kids succeed. I really have a passion for trying to work with our youth and see what their individual needs are to try to create programming to help give them the tools they need to achieve what they hope to achieve. I'm also very passionate about public education because I myself am a product of public schooling. Because of my positive early childhood experiences with school, I have developed a really strong lifelong love of learning, and that has followed me throughout my life and into my career. So I understand firsthand that impact, that your positive, a positive early childhood education experience can have on kids. I hope, as a board member, to bring my experiences along with me and help develop new initiatives alongside the goals of the district's current strategic plan, to help develop new programming to best serve our kids' individual needs, and hopefully maybe play a small part in helping develop a lifelong love of learning for the kids of our district. So again, I thank you for your time tonight, and have a good night.
Thank you very much.
Hi. Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Christian Bell. I've been a resident here at the Steve Eau Claire for a little over 22 years. I think my perspective coming into this is a bit unique, maybe from all of the other applicants, which I think is a great applicant pool. And I say that I look forward to voting for one of you this spring. From the, from the point that I've looked at this is, I don't intend to run in the spring. I'm just a person, I think, that can provide a valuable resource to get from today to April, to fill a need, to make it to the point where if we have issues that we want to bring forward and stand on, let the voters bring that person in. And I welcome that, and I look forward to seeing everybody be a part of that process and a part of this process. But if the applicant that you, that you think best fits the needs is someone who, who doesn't bring that in agenda or issues that are political platforms, that would be me. My goal is, is not to run in the spring. My goal is just to get from where we are today to be a part of that decision-making process and to take care of the daily tasks that come with the position. So with that, I can't really speak about the issues that I support because I just got done saying I don't have positions. So I'm just going to tell you about myself. My wife and I moved here from southern Minnesota, so we, we grew up on the farm, so I appreciate the turkey farmer. We both come from rural backgrounds. For us, moving to Eau Claire was the big city. I mean, I come from a population of 2,000. My wife was even smaller in the community. I think her senior class was 30. So we have that very rural background when we moved to Eau Claire. For us, yeah, we didn't want to go to Chicago. I don't even think that was a blip on the radar. But, but we found our home here, and we started raising our children. We became embedded in the community. I became a firefighter, paramedic. And so my background is I started out in the trades. I was a carpenter. I started out farming. Everything I did was about, you know, getting your hands dirty and doing that work. And I think that's a large segment of our population. You know, I think we, both of the students that are looking to graduate, their careers, what they want to go and do, not all of them are going to go to college. Now, I'm a bit unique. I eventually did. You know, I didn't start out there right away. I worked through the trade schools, became a firefighter, became a paramedic, got hired here. But I knew that I wasn't done. And so even after I got a job here for the city of Eau Claire, I continued to advance my education, finished my bachelor's, went on and completed a master's in Business Administration through the UW Consortium. And eventually, I realized that I still wanted to go on to something, you know, more, and I went on to law school. So I did all this while still working full-time. And as much as that was a blur, it's, I think it's, it was a well-worthwhile achievement. And for me, I don't practice law today. I'm a licensed attorney. To me, I run the fire department, and that's my main focus. But I do want to contribute even beyond that in helping guide this institution through the decisions that they have to make in the next six months. Any questions? Or we're going to save those for later?
Thank you very much.
Good evening. First and foremost, I want to thank each and every one of you for the time and consideration that you guys are putting forth for this board vacancy selection process. I'm Erica Christensen. I have, I'm a mom of two young boys, a first grader and a three-year-old. And I feel like I always introduce myself as being new to the district. However, I'm rapidly losing that claim now that we've been here for about five years. I have been an active member with the Sam Davey PTA for just over a year now, and I am one of the school representatives for the Family Advisory Council. In this past year, I have dedicated a lot of time to understanding some of the unique and challenging dynamics that our district faces by participating in and having conversations with district administration. I believe that the engagement, I believe that engagement is the root and, the root of communication and understanding, and it is because of that that I've decided to apply for this board vacancy. I see this vacancy as an incredibly valuable position in the sense that this is an exclusive group of people that have the extraordinary responsibility of selecting the new district superintendent. And I really hold the future, I really hold the future of the district in your hands right now. Beyond that, the board has the challenging and hopefully pioneering purpose to bring goals to this district. I think many people linger in what has been true for the district in the past, and being stuck in the cycle of that will not bring innovation and an innovative spirit as well as passionate ownership for the future of education here in Eau Claire. My hope and goal is to be a part of the board that will lead from a creative point of view, resourceful in decision-making for the future of education, and with a fiscal responsibility and transparency to every member of the community. Eau Claire Area School District could greatly benefit from the sense of direction that the board holds, so that we can continue not just with theory, but with a forward sense of purpose and active engagement to lead the youth of the city into a meaningful educational experience. I believe that there are a lot of great candidates here tonight. Others have said that as well. They all have valuable experiences and a wide variety of perspective. The fact that there are so many candidates shows just how much we all care for the future of our district, and that this would be such a privilege to be a part of the district in this capacity. I often feel that my experiences don't always stack up as well next to others, but I believe that my commitment and dedication to the success of our schools is evident in the activities that I participate in, as well as the integrity, honesty, and appreciation that I value. It is with this appreciation that I apply for this vacancy, and again, thank you for your consideration.
Thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Karen Pikert. My husband and I moved to Eau Claire 25 years ago from the Twin Cities area. Yes, we are Vikings fans, and I think I'm missing a game right now. Is that right? I think I am. We, so we've lived here 25 years, and I've been actively involved with the Eau Claire School District for, I would say, 21 of them. I didn't apply for this position because of my experience with my two older sons who benefited from their education in Eau Claire. They excelled in school. They took AP classes. They played varsity sports. They did well in college. I didn't apply for this because of what I learned from them. I kind of applied because of what I learned from serving eight years on the Parent Advisory Council, doing six years of fundraising for the Old A Booster Club, being on the launch teams for both the Special Education PTA and Project Search. I've learned a lot from those experiences. I'm certainly not here because of my professional experience as an educator like many of you are. I am not that. But I did apply because I'm probably the only person who, to apply who's ever put a non-verbal three-year-old on a bus for early childhood special education. Who once had to advocate for my child to even take an art class in elementary school and had to advocate for nearly any elective in high school that would be of his choosing. I'm the one who pours over the seclusion and restraint reports, who gets phone calls from parents wondering what it means that their child is going to be on a 504 plan. I understand the highest achieving students. I really do. But I'd really like the opportunity to represent the students who struggle academically, who have physical disabilities, emotional struggles, and those needs are becoming more costly and vastly more complex in our district. A school board that is made up of members with diverse experiences and philosophies can make very sound decisions for our district. I'm interested in this interim position because the decisions that are going to be made in the next several months will have long-term implications for, for our district, specifically the hiring of a new superintendent. Will the new superintendent value collaboration, transparency, and be invested in the community? Will they move our district towards higher expectations and greater inclusion of all students? Can we allow our teachers to exercise greater autonomy and creativity in their classrooms? Can we build stronger bridges to community members and tap into their ideas and their energy? I hope the answer to those questions is yes. You have important decisions ahead of you, and I think I have the skills and the background and the relationships that could help you right now. Thanks for considering my application, and best of luck on your decision. Thanks for considering my application and best of luck on your decision.
Thank you very much. And that's it for the candidates. I will announce that Tom Meyer and Michelle Fortpal withdrew their applications. The next item will be, we have read your applications and they had important questions that you answered ahead of time, and we have heard your statement. I think that we are ready to vote, and this part will be led by Abby Johnson. We will have ballots that have the names of all the candidates printed already there. And we have to write our names to the Oh, sorry. Dr. Bika?
I wonder if, do commissioners have an opportunity to ask questions of the applicants?
Would you like to make any question?
Yes.
Please go ahead.
But I don't want to do it at the, I don't want to do it alone, or other people may have questions. I just wonder what, if there is opportunity for them, is there time for that?
There is opportunity and there is time for that right now. So we have the ballots right now. How about we do the first vote and then proceed with questions? Or would you like to make the questions before voting? Other board members would like to express an opinion? Would you like to proceed to vote or to ask questions? Vote? We can invite questions for the second round of voting? Thank you. There will be an election with four votes. If we don't get a candidate with four votes, then we'll proceed to eliminate the candidates with lowest number of votes, and then we'll go on in that way until we get an elected person. Is that right, Ms. Johnson? Good. So if you're ready, then we can collect the ballots.
Okay, so I have the results of the ballots. This is Commissioner Klinkhammer's vote. She voted for Phil Lyons. Commissioner Harder also voted for Phil Lyons. Commissioner Wu voted for Chris Bell. Commissioner Bika voted for Sarah McCracken. Commissioner Nordean voted for Karen Pikeert. And Commissioner Torres voted for Phil Lyons. So we have three for, for Phil Lyons, and then one for Karen, Sarah, and Chris. So that means we'll go for another round, and we need to get to four. And so the candidates that didn't get any votes will be crossed off the ballot this time. Okay? So bear with me while I do that real quick.
Before we proceed with the second vote, this will be a good time to make a question. Dr. Bika, you had your question. Please go ahead. Thank you.
Appointing a new member to the school board is a very unique opportunity in that board members have the chance to select someone whose training and expertise complements the training and expertise of current members. I'd like you to think of one specific issue or topic that's been the focus of a board meeting sometime this semester. First, could you please identify the source or sources you consulted to gain full understanding of the issue? And then I'd like to know, had you been a commissioner at that meeting, how your training or expertise would have significantly contributed to the board's action on that item, given what's your understanding of the knowledge and skills the six of us bring to the table?
And we will give limited time, of course, for the response. The first statement was three minutes. I think that we could give two minutes to respond to the question. Does that sound fair? Okay. And then we will also follow the same order. The first in line would be Phil Lyons.
Think of one specific issue or topic that's been the focus of a board meeting sometime this semester. First, please identify the source or sources that you consulted to gain full understanding of the issue. And then I'd like to know, had you been a commissioner at the meeting, how would your training or expertise have significantly contributed to the board's action on that issue, given what your understanding of the knowledge and skills that the six of us bring to the table?
You know, I could probably talk about demo trends, but I'm not going to. I've spent quite a bit of time sitting in the gallery, listening to issues throughout the past couple of years. And I think the one that I think was very difficult, and the background that I would bring, was the vote when there was consideration of the donation for Memorial High School of the soccer field, a fairly sizable donation. And what I recall of that was that there was such a time crunch that was placed on accepting that, that I think the board did the right thing in not being under pressure and thinking through all of the implications, the equity between the high schools, what could or would be done for the maintenance of those, of the field, and the implication on athletics. I, the research that, I didn't do any research, I was sitting in the audience, and I do have athletics that reports to me. I do know that athletics in that capacity, it's a very expensive endeavor, and a lot of parents take a lot of out-of-pocket money to be able to support that. I don't know what I would have done, and I probably don't have all of the information, but I do think that, given the way that it was presented to the board, where you had to make a decision by the end of the day, by the end of the night, that it was the right thing to do to not be put under that type of pressure.
Thank you. Sarah McCracken?
Thank you. So one thing I've been following closely is the redoing the boundaries for the elementary schools and the schools in general. I used to live on the west side of town by Roosevelt Elementary. I'm now, I have students or children in Putnam Heights, and so I've been closely following the recent re-boundary of the elementary schools and the potential upcoming re-boundary of the schools. And what I've done in terms of kind of following this issue, I've been reading the minutes from the board. I've been talking to other parents to see their feelings on it. I've also been following demographic and population trends of the community, and I've also gone into the different schools to look at their population sizes and their demographics as well, and kind of following the issue. One thing in my career that I've had to do is be able to step back and rationalize and look at an issue and almost remove my personal feelings on an issue to be able to try to make the best decision. And I think I have a lot of training in that, and I've been able to pride myself on trying to be level-headed and seeing issues from multiple perspectives. I think I could bring that to an issue, especially something like redoing boundaries for schools that is very emotional and emotionally charged and important to families as it affects their whole educational experience. So I'm confident I could bring that ability to share with the other commissioners on the board. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Christian Bell?
Thank you. That was a very good question. And you're just trying to get a position out of me. I know. So, but with that, I think the issue that I'd represent well with is the decision to sell Little Red School. And I know it was met with a lot of discussion as to what its future was, if it was just a straight-out sale, or if it had a better purpose that still served the educational needs. And I think the decision that you made here and selling it to become a trade school, and I don't recall, was it the Pipe Fitters or the, one of those, it was an excellent decision. Obviously, I came up within the blue-collar trade. I am blue-collar all the way. And so when I look at decisions like that, how they can look outside the, look outside the box and say, how can we continue further education? I think that was a very good decision. And that's probably what, had I been sitting here, I would have supported 100% because I support 100% today. So I think that's the, you know, there's many other issues, you know, that are equal as important, but I think that is probably a vital one that deals with, you're not done educating our students simply once they walk out the doors. It's how do you meet those needs of whether they're going to go into a career, go into, you know, post-secondary education? It's preparing them and continuing to work with a system that gives them all the opportunities. And I go, that's how I look at, you know, creating more opportunities for more kids to succeed. Because I think I am probably a good example of, you know, having left high school. If I would have just said that was my peak for educational aspiration, then I wouldn't be standing here today.
Thank you very much. Karen Pikeert?
I think I would also comment on the sale of Little Red, and I would come down maybe on the opposite side. I had a lot of concerns about the way that decision, maybe not about what went on behind closed doors, but I feel like the board took a public relations hit with the way that it was rolled out to the public. That most of your discussions apparently were in closed session, and there was very little communication to the public until it was announced that there was going to be a vote on the sale. And with that school having sat vacant for as long as it had been, knowing how the community felt about that beloved school, knowing that it wasn't going to go back into circulation as an elementary school, but looking at the demographics of that area and knowing how development trends are heading out Highway 37, I felt that you could have done better, that the community would have gotten behind you if they had more information and they had timely information. And that making a decision like that when you were shortly going to be coming out with a referendum and needing the maximum community support that you can get, I thought that the timing was probably poor, not that the decision was poor. I can't speak to that because I don't know what went on in closed session. But I believe that was a lost opportunity to build bridges with the community and build bridges with voters that you were going to be asking to support you in a referendum. So that would be my comment.
Thank you very much. We'll proceed to vote right now.
Okay. Commissioner Bika has voted for Sarah McCracken. Commissioner Nordean has voted for Karen Pikeert. Commissioner Klinkammer has voted for Phil Lyons. Commissioner Harder has also voted for Phil Lyons. Commissioner Torres has voted for Phil Lyons. And Commissioner Wu has voted for Phil Lyons. So we now have four votes for Phil Lyons, and I believe that is, we need the majority, and so four is the majority. So, thank you, everybody.
Thank you very much. Congratulations, Phil Lyons. We will request that Mr. Lyons makes arrangements with Abby Johnson to take the oath of office at some point between tonight and December the 4th, because December the 4th will be your first day in office. Welcome, and our gratitude to all the candidates that offered their service to the community. We will be reaching out to you for participation in other committees and for your feedback in the multiple projects that we have in mind for the near future. So thank you very much. Our next point in the agenda is the election of the treasurer of the board. With the resignation of Mr. Lugenville, that office became vacant. So tonight, we would like to fill in that position to take office immediately. So the floor is open for board members to propose. Commissioner Klinkammer?
I'll nominate Commissioner Harder.
We have a proposition of Commissioner Harder to, for treasurer of the board, and a second. Is Commissioner Harder ready to take the challenge?
I've served in that Again? I've served in that capacity before, and I am very glad to do so again if the board, if it pleases the board.
Are there any other proposals? Hearing none, then we'll proceed to vote. Let's do a roll call, please, for Commissioner Harder to assume the office of treasurer for the rest of this school year.
Commissioner Torres?
Yes.
Commissioner Wu?
Yes.
Commissioner Nordean?
Yes.
Commissioner Bika?
Yes.
Commissioner Harder?
Yes.
Commissioner Klinkammer?
Yes.
I guess we have an election. Congratulations, Commissioner Harder. Having taken care of this important role that we have to fulfill, Having taken care of this important role that we have to fulfill, we need to move forward with our agenda. We will adjourn to committee, and we will receive a report and items for discussion. And the first item is Chippewa Valley Montessori Charter School Update and Contract Review. We have Mr. Johnson presenting.
My problem is I could get talking about it and not stop, so feel free to cut me off. And I also will invite questions as I'm giving the presentation. And I was kind of thinking about this. I stood up at the beginning and received all these accolades, so I, you know, I'm kind of hoping this, you guys take it easy on me. But, no, I'm just kidding. No, I'm just kidding, so. But it is a hard act to follow with all these wonderful people that stood up and ran for the school board and talked about talented people. I've never seen that many people, you know, interested in joining the school board. So we must be doing something right. So, well done. I appreciate that. My goal for tonight is just a really straightforward report of the school and just some of the highlights that I thought stood out to me. And then I'll entertain questions, because I think some of you, or all of you, have questions about the contract and some of the things that were asking for. So with that, I'd like to jump into it. One of the things that I've noticed in our trends when we take the forward exam, which is, which is, the state report card is based on, I notice that if you look at the last three years, ELA, math, science, and social studies, they're all increasing, they're all improving. And one of the things that we talk, that I talk to the staff about is, why can't, especially in reading, why can't all the kids be reading? Why can't they be learning? And we've really taken this to heart. We followed the research, and we were so excited when the district is moving towards the research that was presented, because we bought into that right away. And it's great when we can still utilize the resources that we have, but also tap into the district and a lot of the professional development that's going on. And when those things happen, you can see that the kids, the achievement is increasing across years, and we've taken a lot of pride in that. But I have to give the teachers, the staff, a lot of credit because it's all the hard work that goes into it. And that's one of the wonderful things about working at this school, is the people are dedicated. We're a family. The, you know, one of the things that we believe in is we have each other's backs, that we keep everything positive, and it's contagious with the kids. And we've worked hard to get there. One of the areas for us that's increasing is the number of special education kids that we're working with. And this is kind of across the board between kids that might have some challenging behavioral problems to a learning disability and kids that are in the speech and language program, among others. But we've taken quite a jump in the last three years, and you can see we've had a huge increase in ELA and math. And one of the things is, we really push for those kids to be included in the regular ed classroom. And that's one of the things that we push for, is we pull out when necessary, we support them, but we feel, especially with all the manipulatives and the hands-on curriculum that we use, that kids across the board can be successful. And I think we're seeing that trend. One of the other areas that we've been working on is how do we make sure that non-white children, that we're responding to the cultural differences, and that we are making sure that they're growing at the same rate as the white children? And those are hard conversations. Not everyone wants to have those conversations, but we have started them years ago, and we have, where we feel, especially with our PLCs, that we can have those conversations in our teams and ask the hard questions of each other. And this is just looking at this year's data. The gray is the state and how they scored on the forward exam. The orange is how the white children at Montessori scored, and the blue is how the non-white children scored. And as you can see, we are getting good results, and I know this is going to come up. The problem is, we don't have enough non-white kids in our school. We haven't broken that barrier yet. We're working hard to do it. And we're going to talk about, I'm going to talk about that in just a little bit, but the things we are doing seems to be working. And we'd like to see more kids, non-white kids, attend to our school to see if we can, you know, make, if that holds true, even with the, if we had a higher number of kids that we'd be working with. Like I said, one of the areas we need to work on is the diversity of our school. It's in the state statutes that we need to make attempts on to look like how the Eau Claire School District looks like. And that's a case for any charter school in the state. They should look, when it comes to diversity, like the others, like the district as a whole. And what I've noticed, as I look across the state and look at the charter schools and their makeup, it's a struggle for charter schools. It really is. And especially without looking at the Milwaukee schools or the Racine schools, we, the Appleton, the Eau Claire, the La Crosse's, we struggle with this. And I wish I had the answer. I don't, except that we keep working hard as a staff, and we've reached out and asked for help in certain areas. And most recently, we sat down with Jody Thesen Ritter from UWC, a diversity trader, and we are focusing on microaggressions, which is our language that we use when, whether it's with gender, whether it's with race, but it's about, how do we improve our language so we're not accidentally, without intention, you know, saying the things that can bring someone down, or they're, you know, especially how they feel about themselves. For example, I shouldn't have told my counselor she tosses like a girl, you know? That's a perfect example. While it seems harmless, it is certainly one of the things that gets pointed out, and it's like, oh, you know, you pointed that out, you know, those are the things that we got to improve on to, you know, to help our kids be more respectful and tolerant of each other. And that's what our focus is. The other initiative that we have just started, we arranged our teams, our team, that the staff had picked this initiative up this year. Where in the past, it's been more on the governance board level to increase the diversity of the school. The staff has taken a really strong interest in this, and we have at least one, if not more, governance board representatives that have joined the team. And this is brand-new. And we're hoping maybe the switch in how we're addressing it will have a greater impact on how it's, you know, on the numbers. And maybe we can have a greater impact with the families in Eau Claire, that they will show confidence to send their children to Montessori. Over the years, we have tried many things, and I'm not going to read the whole list to you, but the idea is to show that we have never given up on this. We have tried many, many different things. And when we asked families, what brought them to Montessori? Was it through the advertisements? Was it through the reaching out? And it always came back to the same answer. It was always families talking to each other. It was the message being passed by people in Eau Claire. It didn't come down to any one thing we could do, but it was that message that was being given out by the families that weren't Montessori, or as we learned, by some families who weren't able to get into Montessori, because as a charter school, we're required by the state that we have to hold a lottery if we have too many children and there are seats in the school. So we have a cap, which equals about 300 children, and that's because of the size of the building. And it's a good cap. It fits us perfectly, actually. But when families repeatedly get turned away because of that lottery, you know, the message is sent. And so some families don't apply them, is what we're hearing. Now, the good news, here is some good news. We've increased the diversity of our staff by two members over the last two years, and we're excited about that. We are seeing more adults take an interest in our school that have a diverse background, and we're excited about that. And that, I think, just makes us stronger and sends a message that we are all-inclusive, that we're trying to be, so. Now, this is an area where I think could, I mean, this is my opinion, and I think some people are going to disagree with this, but I really think the lottery system accidentally causes a barrier. I also think 4K busing causes a barrier. Now, I, you know, there's a lot of debates out there, like, well, what does the research say? I couldn't, personally, I couldn't find a lot of research that would say one way or the other. But it seems to me that inherently, if a family can't get their child to school, that busing would help. And if we're trying to raise, if we're trying to bring in kids of a lower economic status, to me, transferring your child is going to be a barrier, especially if both parents are working, or if, you know, they just don't have a vehicle, which we do have families that don't have, that don't have transportation, and we struggle getting to school. We work with our own parents to see if someone can give them, provide transportation, and sometimes it just doesn't work. We just had a family leave last month because they couldn't continue to transport their child to school. So I do think it's a barrier, and that's why we're requesting 4K busing. And actually, I'm going to come back to the busing here in just a little bit. Another area that we need to work on is, if you were to look at our school report card, is the area of growth. And for some reason, I mean, we've dug into it, so we know the areas that we're struggling with, but the growth of our children is not coming out on the state report card. Now, when we use other assessments such as a star, for the aims, we see much better growth, but on the forward exam, it's not there. And we've noticed that it's our higher achieving kiddos that seem to be stuck and not progressing. And the teams are digging into that data. They're looking for, you know, does it fall on one side of the gender line versus the other? We're working closely with our GT person, the fourth and fifth grade teachers are, and we're looking for ways to, how can we stimulate that growth? And so we're working hard to figure out what does that look like. But that is an area that we need to improve upon. There are some points of interest that I think, I find interesting. Compared to the 30K five charter schools in Wisconsin, we are the sixth-largest as a elementary charter school, which is surprising, because we always think of, you know, we're a smaller school, Eau Claire, but actually, when you look at the state and charter schools, we're actually, you know, pretty big. We're the 12th most diversified, if you can believe that. And that's what I mean. The charter schools struggle with the diversity issue, and I think there's a dissertation in there somewhere. It won't be me, but it's out there. We have the eighth highest ELA achievement score, we're the 11th highest math achievement score. One of the things that the governance board and I worked on really hard was, we wrote a $100,000 grant for teachers and some of the staff members to receive Montessori education certifications. And we were awarded that last winter, which has really helped. We've got four teachers being trained right now. They don't, they aren't teachers in the, one is a teacher in the building, but it's a great opportunity for, I think it's six credits more, they can actually get their masters, so they would have to pay for those six credits. They have to pay for also 10% of their education, but wow, what a deal. I wish I was around when I was looking at going into education. But now, all of a sudden, instead of bringing someone in that has no Montessori experience or education, we can start off the bat with someone who has in-depth Montessori education, teaching certification, even a master's. So that's exciting to have four, three people out there. Part of that grant also paid for our associates, which are GSA's, to receive Montessori education as well. And so half of them went this fall, the other half will go the next fall. One of the things, just, I want to clear up about the 4K busing, because I think it's only fair to say, I think that one of the questions might be, do you have to provide it? The quick answer is no, you don't. I think it's sometimes the charter language is murky when you look at the state level. They make it appear in the state statutes that if you, or you need to or you should transport kids, as you do in all your other schools in the district, but the Bureau of Financial Administration, I wrote it down, I can't get the exact name, clearly came out and said, "School districts do not have to transport charter school kids." So we are very thankful, very thankful for our 5K through the fifth graders getting transported. But when we look at areas that might help the school improve, that's the reason we're asking for 4K busing. We feel it's a barrier. We won't know until we, until we get it, and then it's like, oh, boy, you know, if it doesn't, you know, help the school look like the rest of the school district, then we got really big other issues. And I think you can always work to improve, but I do think that could be possibly one of the barriers. We also made a couple adjustments in the contract, and that's in my report. It's about the length of time that we give teachers and the administrator time to get their Montessori certification. Why that changed is because UW River Falls is now offering a Montessori certification program, and we based it on that, because that's a closest to our school. That wasn't in existence back in 2015 when we last passed the contract. So we adjusted it because of that. Questions?
Thank you very much, Mr. Johnson, for your report. Now, the floor is open for questions from board members. Commissioner Wu?
Can't retire.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
For doing such an outstanding job on the academic achievement and also building the climate that teamwork exists to meet the needs of the students' best interests.
Thank you.
The one or two observations that I want to make, and, because you're leaving, you can say harsh words with your team. You have about 300 students, and out of that, about 10 students of color. And I think you may have done your best, but the best is not representing what the potential that it can be. Eau Claire School District used to have about 17% students of color. Try to shoot for that same balance. You are at 11% right now.
Yep.
It could be that families don't know enough about what you do. It could be that 70% of that 300 are from the middle to upper-class students because of the poverty, the percentage of student in free or reduced lunch is at 30.
Yes.
So that leaves you with the majority who are more wealthy and well-to-do and know the level of support and have the level of support and know the value of your school. So share the great wealth in this community by share the... So share the great wealth in this community by share the good thing that you do and hoping that more will want to join you. So thank you for your good work.
Thank you.
Other questions or commentaries for the report? Commissioner Vika?
I'd like to ask for some additional information from Montessori.
Please go ahead.
One thing in the charter school agreement, contract, that the administrator would provide the diversity plan to the board upon request. So I'd like to see a copy of that plan and any data collection around the plan. I would like to request the data that you provided on the forward exam. Could we please have comparisons to district performance at the elementary level? So comparison of Montessori to, I know those data exist, but can I ask for those to be And whenever possible, could you disaggregate the data by race, class, and/or gender? And if there's any possibility, when you talk about change, it's hard for me to determine when the data provided are percentages, if these are statistically significant increases, or if the performance is essentially the same. So any data along those lines of significant change? And then I have a couple of questions about the busing for points of clarification, may I?
Please go ahead.
So I wonder, when you talk about the need for busing, and I understand that need, I wonder to what extent have you been consistently drawing students from your own neighborhood? I would like to know how effective has your recruitment been? Then these students would be walkers or bikers, and so they wouldn't be in need of busing. So I'd like to know about draw from the immediate neighborhood. The other thing is a point of clarification. Priority is given to students who are already attending the school. Does that mean that students who are in 4K are then given priority to continue into 5K? Is that correct?
That is correct, and the state statutes is, you know, that allows the school to do that. It doesn't, the state statutes do not allow us to give priority for race or economic status. We actually tried that and found out the hard way that you can't do that.
I understand that. There are ways to recruit along those lines. So my follow-up question would be, how would you disentangle the lack of diversity and the 4K issue? How would you disentangle the need for busing from the priority given for continue, for students who begin as 4K are given priority to then continue in 5K? How have you attempted to perhaps disentangle that? I would like more information along those lines.
Thank you, Dr. Vika. Any other question or commentary? Commissioner Harder?
Thanks for the report and thanks for your great work.
Can I ask one quick?
Yeah, please go ahead.
Really quick? Did somebody write all this down? Okay, thank you.
Take a note, say. Thank you for this report and for the hard work of your whole team and yourself at the school. I've had a few kids go through the Montessori school.
Yep.
And I've got one there now. We really have enjoyed the experience. But as a parent and as someone who's, my wife has been on the Governance Board, I've had a little closer look at the 4K issue over the last few years, the 4K busing issue, and it's concerned me because it's always struck me that that's, as you're talking about disentanglement, I don't think you can separate them. This is the major way in to secure the spot through this lottery system, the way it's set up. That's the first step on that ladder is 4K, and when we have that barrier to entry there, I think it's, it raises the question for me, and has for some years, are we doing everything we can as a district to make sure this school reflects our community? So I guess, I've said that before, I just wanted to say it again, it's a good opportunity to do it.
Appreciate it, ma'am.
Any other question or commentary? I have a couple of commentaries, and perhaps one or more than one question. In relation to the diversity issue and the diversity plan, as you know, I'm also, I represent the board in the governance body of the Chupewali Montessori School, and I've expressed interest and concern about the lack of diversity in the school, even the lack of diversity in the governance board. And I've suggested intentional efforts to reach out to the community to find those individuals that could enrich with their backgrounds, the decision-making body in the school. I think we are still in time to do that. My concern, a concern that I have also shared in the board is the performance of economically disadvantaged children. Looking at the report card, I noticed that for both English Language Arts and Mathematics, the percentages of students that are below the proficient level are really high. For 16, 17 is 54.8% for English, 17, 18 is 65.7%, and 18, 19 is 45.7%. And on the math side, it's more or less the same. For 16, 17 is 58.1% of students that are economically disadvantaged, performing below the professional level. For 17, 18 is 62.5%, and for 18, 19 is 57.1%. Of course, by statute, we cannot identify who those students are, but you know who they are. I wonder, that's a question that I have made to the board, what are the specific strategies that have been put in place during all this time to address that issue? And what have been the results? Those percentages are really too high and concerning and should deserve, you know, priority attention from the governance board. Those were my two commentaries. I would ask for clarification, Abby Johnson, what is the issue with transportation? Do we provide transportation for 4K students?
Would you like that clarification right now?
If you don't mind.
Okay, sure, just wanted to make sure. So we do provide transportation to students that need transportation, and they go to Prairie Ridge, and so that is, we're automatically transporting them. Now, for Montessori, we do have some 4K students that are receiving transportation currently, and that's because they live either close to a bus stop that's already stopping to take kids to Montessori, or they might have an older sibling that's currently attending Montessori. We don't have any parent contracts out there for 4K Montessori, but that's also another method that the school district uses when we need to provide transportation, and Student Transit isn't either able to or it's not the most cost-effective. We did work with Student Transit to look at what impact would that have to provide, like, what would the budget impact be if the desire was to offer transportation? The morning piece is a little bit challenging to come up with the exact number because, you know, kids are coming from all over the district, and so we would use the most cost-effective way to get them there. We have a better feel for the midday transportation, and that would be about $52,000 a year because there isn't a lot of opportunity to pair on to other routes because it would be a private school route that we would potentially look at partnering with in order to do that midday transportation. So we did, we feel good about that, about $52,000 for that midday transportation for a year. The morning, if you wanted to just estimate high and double that, you could say that. It probably would look different for the morning just because, based upon where the students would be coming from, and it's hard to pinpoint with, I think 11 of them that are there this year are getting a ride because they have a sibling or they're close to a normal Montessori bus stop. I hope that helps.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
And my last commentary would be in relation to the extended time requested for training. Extending it to four years would mean that there's a full cohort that will have a teacher without Montessori certification, and that would be a concern.
Well, the other clause we put in there is that they have to start their training within that first year of being hired, and that's how we were kind of compensating for that, ideally. And that's, we looked at the contract as if we wouldn't have anyone in the wings that's working on their Montessori certification right now. But history tells us that we do not get teachers that are certified in Montessori, and we sometimes miss really good teachers if we wait too long to hire a teacher and then put them into the certification program. So we acknowledge that fact. It had some on the Governance Board very concerned, such as Liz Harder, and we felt that we still had to honor the program, especially with, you know, if students come out of the undergrad program, a lot of times, they don't even have the financial needs, so we thought we were pushing them to jump into literally a masters program even that soon after their undergrad. So we did extend it to four years, because that's, we felt that was reasonable, given that they took, I forget, so many credits each semester, so. I mean, I think you have to look at the hiring committee, I would, I'd want to say the hiring committee would hire someone that has their full certification over someone who doesn't. That seems to be, you know, I don't want to say common sense, but that seems like that'd be best for kids, but we did put it in the contract that way. And there is a lot of conversation on that going back and forth about what should that actually look like. That's where we did end up. I don't know if my ramblings made it any clearer or not.
Yes, that you prefer four years.
Yeah. That's it.
And yeah, thank you very much. Any other questions for Mr. Johnson from the board? Oh, Commissioner Klinghammer?
Thanks again for your many years of good service. Just one quick clarification, and congratulations on the grant that you received. I know a lot of hard work goes into writing those, so that's a real feather in your cap. You had mentioned something about some of it goes to your staff, some of it goes to current teachers, and then you said some of it is out there for people who aren't staff? Did I, I might have misunderstood what you were talking about there.
So when we were awarded the grant, we knew right away that a small chunk of it was going to pay for our six GSA's, we call them associates, to go receive, or go to a workshop to get their Montessori, you know, training on how to work in the classroom to strengthen that. That was a very small piece of it. The other big chunk of it went towards teacher education, and we turned around and had, we opened it up to everyone in the district and in the public to apply for that grant, and then we held interviews for four positions for, that we would give it to four recipients, and they could attend, you know, UW River Falls, and that's what we did.
Can I ask a?
Did that clear?
Yeah, but I have a follow-up question. So were there not enough teachers in the building that could have benefited from that? Or teachers in the, I'm wondering why we opened it to the public?
Sure. Well, one teacher did receive it, that's currently working there, and it was, she was a brand-new teacher, so that was great for her. All the other teachers have a Montessori certification. Some have a much more in-depth certification than others, but they all have Montessori certification that are classroom teachers, with exception to the art, music, and piano.
Okay. You just mentioned that, you know, teachers coming in, brand-new teachers, you felt like you had to stretch it to four years for them to finish because of, you know, monetary constraints. Were we able to earmark that, to hold those grant funds?
No.
As, okay, so that's probably part of the issue, is you couldn't hold on to it as you got new teachers coming? Okay.
No. We, that grant has to be used up by December 2021, if I remember right, and I hope I have that right. And so they have to be finished with their program within a certain time. Also, the certification program, we looked at an E2 certification, which is much, which is lengthier than like a children's house, which is 4K, 5K certifications. We looked at the longest program and based it off of that.
Thank you.
Any other question? Here in London, we'll thank again Todd Johnson for your work and leadership, and we'll look forward to receiving the additional information that was requested to make a decision by the latest, the end of January, for the renewal of the contract.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next point in the agenda is five-year capital selected projects.
My name is Darrell Peterson. I am currently serving as the interim director of Buildings and Grounds for the District, and I have the pleasure of presenting the proposed 2021 capital improvement budget for next year. In developing that budget, we are allocated a $1.6 million budget number to use when we're trying to look at all the needs that the district has and kind of put it together in a package that is manageable, and then moving forward with how those projects go to design and development, and then ultimately to making it happen over the course of a short two-and-a-half-month period in the summertime. We looked at preventative maintenance as well as facility improvement when we're putting this budget together. Some key areas that we looked at when developing the budget that you'll see here in a minute. We looked at facility exteriors, we looked at facility interiors, and as well as some HVAC plumbing and electrical needs that we looked at and kind of defined here in the budget for some attention. So in looking at the first portion of the budget, the facility exteriors, we have projects ranging from tennis court repairs at both of the high schools, a window project here at the administration building to finalize that project that's been going on, obviously, for a couple of years. One project that has been identified in this area that I would call attention to is the re-roofing project at Memorial High School, which was kind of prompted by the discussions that have been had with the board on a potential solar project that may have gone there. And while the roof area at Memorial is at a time where it could be looked at as a repair, if the solar project is not something that would move forward for the 2021 summer, we would be, kind of throw it out there, that that may not be the highest priority at this point in time, and we do have some other areas identified as potential fallbacks in that case. that case until such a time as the solar project would become a viable piece of what we want to move to. And the reason that that roof was looked at, of course, is if we were going to put a solar project down there that could potentially not need any attention for up to 25 years or so, not having a new roof underneath it so that we would have to disturb that solar project would not be really in a good financial sense for the district, we didn't feel when we were developing it. So I guess moving forward, that would be just one area in our facility exterior portion that I would just throw out there as we're, as we look to move forward with the budget here. We have a few other items that are fair, not minor, but we do have a storage shed at South Middle School that needs a new roof and a couple of other things there. Looking at the facility interiors, one of the items that has come up in the past is getting some accessible signage here at the administration building to better direct folks when they are moving around, trying to find the right department and the right people that they need to see. We have a fire alarm upgrade project planned for Roosevelt Elementary School. This one is in the process of being designed, so we're working towards that. And then the, one of the other issues was the balcony accessibility at Memorial High School. This was, had come up a couple of years ago where if we needed to get people up to the balcony, we really have no way of getting anyone there that would be in a wheelchair or crutches or things like that without going up a flight of stairs. So that's where that one came to be part of this, moving forward with kind of an accessibility for our buildings. Looking at plumbing and HVAC, we do have a new building automation system that is 25 years old over at Northwoods Elementary School that is failing terribly and is causing us some, some problems with controlling the inside climate of the building, and so we are looking into that one, as well as a couple of heating issues and ventilation issues at the service center. Another item that's on here is, if I step back here, the Roosevelt Secure Entrance is moving forward as well. We have selected a design company that is working on the plans as we speak, with the hopes of that being able to go out to bid sometime in January, February, and looking at getting that moving as soon as possible, hopefully come the spring. So definitely something that's going to go on there. If we go to just kind of a summary of everything put together, we were, again, working with a $1.6 million budget. We do have some contingencies built in because of the fact that we have not, at this point, been able to take everything to design, to come up with true pricing. We feel we're close, but obviously we want a little bit to fall back on. We have one more referendum project that was put off a year ago due to contractor availability, and that is a big window project, a project that is planned for Sam Davy Elementary School, and that will hopefully be something that will go on and happen this summer. That is well in the works to be starting as soon as school gets out. And then last but not least, we have some ventilation issues that have come up at Memorial High School with the movement of the NOC for our IT department that resulted in some overheating things that happened last year, and we needed to come up, at least at this point, a preliminary plan with what we can do to ventilate that space so that half of the district doesn't drop off the grid when it gets a little too warm in the summer. So that one there is also in the process of being looked at and designed at this point also, and that's kind of a brief look at what the capital budget looks like for this year. I would entertain any questions if you have it at this point that I can clarify.
Thank you very much for your report. The floor is open for questions for there. Dr. Pika?
So this is for clarification on the Daktronics. So if, and I'm using the, I'm using the paper form.
Yep.
So do I understand correctly that Daktronics, the accessibility issue is Memorial only?
At this point, yes. The Daktronics piece of the Memorial project, because of its location in the balcony area in the gym, as opposed to what's at North High School where it's all on the main floor, that's why this one kind of came to the top, because if we have students that want to get into that class, yeah, they can't get there.
So I guess I'm wondering, why is, for North High School, why is one of the items Daktronics? What is the accessibility issue at North High School? Or perhaps there is none, and so this would need to be updated?
You can if you want, otherwise, go ahead, Kim.
It is perhaps more of curricular accessibility in that because it's on the main floor of the gymnasium, when the gymnasium is being used, it's hard for the students in the Daktronics course to be able to, they would interrupt a FIAED course in order to do some of the work they would need to do on the Daktronics equipment, so they end up trying to find another place and time to do that.
So this line item then, what is the, for North High School, what is the $28,000 that would provide Daktronics accessibility?
Back when the, when the Daktronics system was all installed, they were looking at the potential of moving that into, well, there's been a couple of discussions. One was moving it into the old athletic office area and actually creating a little workspace in there. In some recent conversations with some folks out at North High School, there's also been thought about whether or not it should just, there should be access granted down in the actual tech ed wing so that the students wouldn't have to leave. It seemed at the time that we were putting this budget together, there wasn't a real clear picture on where they exactly wanted that to be and what, how that curriculum piece would come together. So it was kind of hard to nail down, yes, we want to set this office up for it, or no, we need to look more into the tech ed wing. That's why at the time of this, the development of this budget, we kind of had to put it on a back burner for more input from the school as to how they would envision that working into their curriculum project.
Different question. For facility exterior Memorial High School, athletic shed expansion slash restrooms, is that intended to capture this, the question about exterior restrooms with running water? Is that that line item, or is that something different?
She's reading from the print.
Oh, from the print. Well, I think one of the, one of the other discussions that was had at the time too of the, of the budget development was the grant pieces happening with the field development and the grounds development at Memorial and the two different groups that were kind of working, with what that whole picture should look like, and whether or not, looking at just the shed at this point to how we could add restroom facilities to the current athletic shed that's there, would that impede into other things that could be happening with these projects, since we don't have a clear picture as exactly the direction that those were moving? To develop that area with at least some of the background that I've been able to see, there's really not a clear picture if it, if it would impede some of the other developments that's there, and to throw money at the shed just for that at this point in time until those things get settled in, it just didn't seem financially responsible to look at one little piece without looking at the great big picture of how they're looking to develop that whole area at Memorial. So I don't know if that answers the question clearly, but it was just at the time when we were putting it together, we just couldn't put together enough clear information of what the grants and those things might look like, and how that whole development of the area may impact the grounds and what the whole picture could look like down the road when, when and if that all comes to fruition, so.
May I follow up?
Please go ahead.
Then do you feel at this point that you have some clarity about what information you would need to move forward with that piece?
So there, there are a couple of moving parts with that, and there are two things that we probably would like information on before deciding where the shed expansion would take place. One is what will the footprint of the track and the fencing around the track look like? We don't want to expand the shed and then find out that we've impeded on that. And then the second piece is, we know that there's still some interest in the group, from the group that had originally approached the board on perhaps doing something again in the future, and we would like to know kind of what that plan could look like so that what we would do with the shed wouldn't be undone in any other potential expansion.
Any other questions for Darrell? Hearing none, then we're going to say thank you for the reporting.
Thank you.
And at this point, I would like to ask board members if you have any requests for future agenda items. Hearing none, then we'll proceed with the regular agenda setting meeting, and it's time to adjourn. It is 9:05. I will need a motion to adjourn. Move. Thank you. Motion to adjourn by Commissioner Boo, and a second is needed as well. Second. And we have a second. Those who approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Those who oppose, same sign. Meeting is adjourned.
This program was brought to you by a cooperation between Newsworks and the O'Clare Area School Board.